I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order, August 25th, 2014. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Peliquin.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Present.
Thank you. Number three, consider and accept Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, August 4th, 2014. So, second. Any discussion, corrections? Counselor Clements?
I'll abstain, I was not here.
Any others? Seeing none, by hand is fine, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, with the exception of the abstention. Item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A, General Government, Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do not have any meeting minutes to report on, and nothing scheduled at this time.
Thank you. B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
No report, and no meeting scheduled, thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Peliquin.
Thank you, I have some meeting minutes. Meeting of the Education and Human Services Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, August 19th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Vecchia, Counselor Steves, Counselor Moriarty, citizen members Martina Shea and Kristen O'Clare, President of Southbridge Youth Soccer, John McLaughlin, School Committee members Lauren McLaughlin and Cara Donovan, and Citizen Kevin Congdon. I called the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Agenda item number one, discuss and vote to recommend to full council the naming of the newly constructed playground at West Street School. Kevin Congdon was there to represent the Playground Committee, and he stated they would like to formally name the playground after retired teacher Michael A. Vesha. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia, and seconded by Counselor Steves, to name the playground the Michael A. Vesha Playground. Counselor Steves asked Mr. Congdon how they planned to honor Mr. Vesha, and Mr. Congdon said there would be a sign erected, "Michael A. Vesha Playground," along with a quote for Mr. Vesha. Mr. Congdon said there will also be a few objectives of the playground, not formal rules. He said that would be up to the town to list some stringent rules. Mr. Congdon passed out flyers announcing the formal ribbon-cutting ceremony, which will be held on Wednesday, September 3rd. Is it actually September 3rd, I think it's September 1st?
No, it is September 3rd.
It is September 3rd, okay. Wednesday, September 3rd, at 1:30 PM, with Mr. Vesha and all the students in attendance. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. I noted that Ms. O'Clare could not vote, as she was not sworn in. Counselor Moriarty said he would like to add an item added to the agenda. He stated that Southbridge Youth Soccer would like permission to do some reseeding, and have K&amp;C Lawn Care do some repair work to the Lower West Street field. It will be of no cost to the town, but they do need permission to complete the work, because the field is the property of the town. A motion was made by citizen member Shea, and seconded by Counselor Steves, to permit Southbridge Youth Soccer and its agents to seed and perform minor one-time upgrades to the Lower West Street soccer field, and send to council for ratification. John McLaughlin said the field is a beautiful field and has good drainage. They could have played on the field as soon as the snow melted, but a few years ago, the field hockey team had played there, and the middle of the field got worn down. Now that area is all weeds, and they're going to get pulled up there, so there will be bare dirt to play on. He went on to say if the town gave them permission, they were going to have the U-10 kids play at Moore Street. They had all their permits already, and they were going to have the U-12 kids play at the big field. Mr. McLaughlin said he would also ask if there's some way to tap into the sprinkler system at the big field to get water down to the lower field, again at no cost to the town. Counselor Moriarty said he could send it off to Heather, the acting DPW Director, to see what it would take to get done. Mr. McLaughlin went on to speak a little bit about youth soccer. He said they had 156 boys and girls playing in the spring. They would probably have less in the fall, but he anticipated having about 175 kids next spring. They could even hit 200, because they will have U-18 and U-16 teams as well. He said that for girls especially, there are no other sports organizations. Youth soccer, that was about all that was available to them. These are very important things to raise the morale of the kids and develop pride in our town. Mr. McLaughlin said they made sure the kids have good uniforms, and they buy them the best game balls. In the winter, the kids play at the Armory, so they are always doing something. He went on to say that he hopes that as a town, they would look at getting more opportunities for our boys and girls. He said that he often thought that during budgeting, maybe they could come up with, they could think about putting aside some money to fix up Henry Street Field or Moore Street Field. We really have some great resources there. Mr. McLaughlin said the lower field at West Street doesn't drain well in the springtime, and when you're walking down West Street, this is an appearance for our town. People are coming in from Charlton, Shrewsbury, Tantasca, everywhere. He said when you park your car, there's a fence there, and somebody was taking the posts out. It's just an eyesore. He said this is where we live, this is our town. Mr. McLaughlin said he builds pride from the bottom up. Counselor Vecchia said he appreciated everything that Mr. McLaughlin was doing, and that he was on his side, and would do anything he could to help. Counselor Steves said when he was running for council, he spoke to a lot of people that had concerns about kids' issues beyond sports, but art and general education issues, and general activities around town for them. He asked how can we begin to tie all that together between town funds, grants, and even just sweat equity to fix some of these issues. Counselor Moriarty noted twice now that the Disability Commission has asked for meetings, and they had had them with the former Town Manager Clark, as well as the School Committee, and people from that commission as well. He said there are a number of ADA non-compliance issues at Charlton Street School Field, and West Street School Field in particular. Almost none of these issues have been addressed. He said that it was going to cost money, but it was something that the council and the school committee jointly would have to address. Counselor Moriarty added as a positive note that there is now an ad hoc committee that is charged with redeveloping and redesigning Henry Street Field. He said that he believed at the last council meeting that they voted on the architecture firm that was going to run it. Counselor Moriarty said the only sports really available to girls were soccer, cheerleading, although he wasn't sure that could be considered a sport. Or if someone has a daughter, they could play YMCA basketball, or play in the Little League. He said in the past, I'm sorry. He said in the past, there were people that tried to start softball leagues, and there just hasn't been much interest shown. Ms. O'Clare said that the youth soccer has been so great in the culture of inclusiveness. Her daughter is an older kid, but it's her first time, and the support that she is getting from everyone in the league has been great. Mrs. McLaughlin said that in the school district this past spring, they conducted a youth risk behavior survey by the Centers for Disease Control in Massachusetts. They're waiting to get the report back, but the reason for doing it was to determine what issues and see what problems are out there. She said more importantly, it opens the community up to a ton of grants, federal dollars, so once they get the results, they will share that information, and see how they can leverage funding that way to help us out. Counselor Steves said he would like to see a lot more focus on health issues, and he also asked if there is any way to see how many kids played sports elsewhere. Mr. McLaughlin said that as far as soccer, there weren't many, and Counselor Moriarty said that as far as other sports, it is a hard number to track. Mr. McLaughlin said there are a lot of negative things said about Southbridge, but we are a very diverse community. He reiterated that we have great kids in our town, we just have to give them more opportunities. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty, and seconded by Counselor Steves. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. And that's five people voting, because Counselor Moriarty voted on the motion to adjourn. I adjourned the meeting at 7:30 PM. Respectfully submitted, Jessica French Recording Clerk. And I don't know if that completely accurately portrayed your comments about whether cheerleading is a sport, I apologize if that's misconstrued in some way.
Thank you.
I have no meeting scheduled, by the way.
Okay. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. A meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held on Thursday, August 7th, 2014, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance was myself, Subcommittee Members Counselor Estrada, Counselor Steves, and citizen members Evelyn Vitrelli and Wallace McKenzie. Also in attendance were Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Clements, Counselor Vandal, Counselor Peliquin, Town Manager Pecos, Cassandra Ackley, Ray Gothier, William Clark, Daniel Butler, Andrew Pelletier, Nick Tortis, Kristen O'Clare, Hunter Foot, Roger Anistel Kowat. I called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I went through the rules and protocol of the Subcommittee. Agenda item number one, Discuss Forman and Implementation Steering Committee. Mrs. Ackley stated that she has undertaken a master plan, a master planning for our town. One of the things that was looked at was forming an Implementation Steering Committee, who would look at the details, ideas of the master plan, and disperse the information to subcommittees. Mr. Pecos said this committee would be appropriate, would be appropriate for the council to form. A seven-member board was suggested. A request for members to this board will be announced at the Town Council meeting. Agenda item number two, Review Plans for 1 through 11 Central Street. Mrs. Ackley introduced Hunter Foot, the owner of 1 through 11 Central Street. Mr. Foot explained plans for the renovations to be done to this building. It will have seven units plus a storefronts. There will be a handicapped unit. Agenda item number three, Discuss next CD/BG application. Mrs. Ackley said they will be applying in February 2015 for CD/BG grant, and this is the time to start thinking about recommendations for funding. Agenda item number four, Vote to Award the Redesign of McCann Field and Submit to Council for Ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Steves, and seconded by Counselor Estrada, to award the redesign of McCann Field and submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Ackley said she has been working with McCann Field Subcommittee. Evaluations were done, and Warner Larson has been chosen to do the redesign of the McCann Fields and Park. Counselor Steves withdrew his prior motion, and Counselor Estrada seconded it. A motion was made by Counselor Steves, and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to award the redesign of the McCann Field to Warner Larson in the amount of $28,000. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda item number five, Review and Discuss Erasing of Chickens on Parcels Less Than Five Acres. Counselor Steves abstained from discussion on this agenda item on the recommendation of Town Council. Mrs. Ackley discussed the history of this bylaw. Mr. Pecos explained what the provisions are when changing the wording of the bylaw. Due to the nature of the style of the government which Southbridge has, the council can choose from the following three options. One, Adopt the Bylaw as Recommended by the Planning Board. Two, Make a Change in the Bylaws as Recommended by the Planning Board. Three, Take No Action at All and Recommend Something Different. Mr. Pecos recommended that we adopt the current bylaw as recommended by the Planning Board. Making any substantive changes to the wording of the Planning Board's recommendation would have to start the process all over. Mr. Spinelli stated we should pass the bylaw as the Planning Board has recommended, and later tweak it as needed. Agenda item number six, Vote to Recommend the Changes to the Proposed Bylaw for Livestock on Less Than Five Acres of Land and Send to Council with a Positive Recommendation. A motion was made by Mr. McKenzie, and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to recommend the changes to the proposed bylaw for livestock on less than five acres. Vote by show of hands, four for, one abstain, just Steves. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Manna, and seconded by Mr. McKenzie. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. I adjourned the meeting at 9:25 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, Recording Clerk. There is, I believe, an error in Agenda Item Number One, in the, one, two, three, four, and the fifth sentence, it says, "Mr. Pecos said this committee would be appropriate for the council," it's just spelt incorrectly, if we could get that word in, C-O-U-N-C-I-L. And in Agenda Item Number Five, where it says the recommendation, no, take that back, and that's it. Oh, and I do have a Subcommittee Plan for September 2nd at 6:00 PM, in the George Parent Conference Room. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Steves.
Actually, Agenda Item Number Five, that should read Counsel-C-O-U-N-S-D-L, as in Town Attorney, not Council, that's what I'm spotting. And also, I wanted to add, there's a couple of, couple of people, one, there's a Maureen Doyle was left out of the attendance list.
Can't hear you.
I said Maureen Doyle was left out of the attendance list, because she was there. And it should be Kristen O'Clare, K-R-I-S-T-E-N, not Kirsten. That's it.
Okay. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, we have no meeting minutes, but we did have a meeting last week, last Thursday, which was to discuss the three appointments that the council will be voting on today. As of now, we have no other meetings scheduled.
Thank you. F, Town Manager Search Committee, Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, just to give the citizens an update, we are still awaiting an email with responses in regards to the candidates that responded to the essay questions, from the top-tier candidates. There's about 14 candidates that were selected to submit essay questions in return. We have yet to receive that email. I will be contacting Don Johnson tomorrow, to see when we will get that email. Like that, the committee can begin to review the essay responses, but we do have a meeting scheduled on September 4th at 6:00 PM here at the George Conference, George Parent Conference Room, excuse me.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements, I just have two quick ones. One is just a reminder to everybody that the school's starting this week, one, in the mornings, give yourself that extra little bit of time, because you get stuck behind a bus, but two, more importantly, just make sure you're paying attention, watching out for kids on their way to and from school. And secondly, as alluded to earlier in the EHS, EHS meeting minutes, Wednesday, September 3rd, this Wednesday here, rather, next Wednesday, at 1:30 PM will be the ribbon-cutting and playground dedication ceremony over at the West Street School Playground, and that we're looking forward to seeing some folks there. And we'll turn it over now. Agenda Number Six is Town Managers' Announcements, Mr. Pecos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, four or five items here first. I want to let you know that Mike Montigny, our Cable Coordinator, called today and indicated that the Valley Communications will be here in this, in your chambers, on the 17th of September, to start connecting the new speakers, and should be finished the next day. So by the council meeting after the 18th, we should have the whole new sound system in, and hopefully you will see a dramatic improvement in your ability to hear one another, and the public here in the room to hear you. It's already fine, from what we're told on cable, but not so good in the room. This should resolve it, hopefully. Second item, Physical Improvements Subcommittee of the Southbridge Downtown Partnership is sponsoring a town-wide yard sale on Saturday, September 6th, from 8:00 to 3:00. If you would like to participate, there are signup forms at Zoe's, Planters, Envy's, Styles' and Big Bunny Market. You may also find them in the Town Hall, and the ED Economic Development Department in the basement. For a donation of $10, you can have your yard sale on our map, or have a space on the Town Common. Call 764-5402 with questions. If you'd like to shop, come to the Town Common at 8:00 AM on September 6th. For a donation of $10, you will receive a map with all the yard sales app wet day, as well as visit the yard sales on the common. Third announcement, the farmer's market at Big Bunny Market parking lot is going strong. I'm not sure if everybody's seen it over there, but pretty impressive piece of work. A lot of local farmers are participating in that. They want us all to know that they are now starting the farmer's markets at 10:00 AM on Saturday, so you want to experience some fresh produce, lots of it produced right here in town, then come on down Big Bunny's at 10:00 AM on Saturdays. Very pleased to advise the council and the public that the town has been awarded a fiscal 2014 mini entitlement grant in the amount of $900,000 from the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant Program. This is a direct result of Sandy Ackley and her staff, and the Economic Development Commission, the Industrial Development Commission, lots of folks who participate in this annual process to put the grant application together. We are what's called a semi-entitlement community, meaning provided we put together a good competitive grant that meets the purposes of the Community Development Block Grant Program, we are assured of being funded, but it is not, by any means, an automatic. So a lot of good work has to go into producer's result, and I think I speak for all of us in saying this is wonderful, this is great news, and this will continue to do a lot of excellent work all over town, in the area of economic development and community, community work, so that's great news. And Casella has told us that they are extending an invitation to the public for an open house on Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They'll be doing guided tours of the landfill, landfill gas-to-energy facility, so people can come in and see how the refuse pile actually generates a sustainable resource, in this case, gas, which is then converted into electricity and fed back to the grid. There'll be all sorts of fun things, very educational for people to see, and there'll be some activities for kids, and most importantly, at least from my point of view, lunch will be served. So, public is invited to come on down and see how that operates. And the last item, the Southbridge Water Department will be performing semi-annual hydrant flushing, on Tuesday, starting the program on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, at approximately 7:00 AM, and continuing daily for approximately six to eight weeks between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM. The flushing will start in the Westville area, and continue easterly through town. The department requests that during this period, customers check their water before washing clothes. I think everybody's aware this stirs up the sentiments that are in the pipe, that's why we do it, gets rid of that sentiment, but while the pipes are being flushed, it can create turbulence and staining of laundry if people are not careful. Customers may also get accumulated sentiments in their house laterals and experience some discolored water. This will clear up after a brief run of water at the tap, so turn on your tap, let that run, should take care of it very quickly. If you have questions, you can contact the Southbridge Water Department with any questions or comments that you might have. And that is all the announcements I have, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven is swearing in presentations, and we have two of these tonight, the first of which is recognition of a recently retired police officer, Cindy Avansky, and I'd like to have Police Chief Charette and recently retired Officer Avansky, please come to the podium for a few words.
Would you like to go first, or? Give me a couple of words, and I don't want to be unglad to Cindy. These are the evenings that are great, counsel. To see someone who's dedicated over three decades of their life to our community, and a few of the words I said the other night at Cindy's retirement party to her family are, you know, a lot of people don't realize the nights, the weekends, the holidays, that mums and dads, and bobshees, grandmothers, and the rest are away from the family. And it's very unusual for an officer to be able to do 30-plus years of working on the street, and Cindy accomplished that in a professional and kindly manner that set a standard so high. And I think most of you know by now, Cindy was the first full-time female officer for Southbridge, and I didn't want to lead off with that, because so often that overclouds the fantastic work that she did. Cindy never played a female card, she never had to, she was tougher than most of us, and compassionate when that was necessary, so I hate to lose her, I hate to see the community lose her, but it's with, what a proud, proud honor that I got to serve 30 years with such a fantastic person, so I'll let Cindy speak.
Just gonna make it short and brief, 31 years ago, I was 26 years old, and I was presented before the council, of course, none of you members were here, and I was appointed as a police officer here in Southbridge, and I told you that I would do the best of my ability to serve the town of Southbridge. Here I am, 31 years later, and 57 years old, saying goodbye, and wanting to thank you for allowing me to serve the town of Southbridge.
So we'd like to extend the parting gift. I can say that for myself, having had a brother who was on the police force for a while, I've known Cindy since I've known anybody. And I can, I can say, by no means as a down note on anybody else, but if there was ever a consummate example of what a police officer should be, in my opinion, it's Cindy Avansky. So today, and tonight, rather, on behalf of the Town Council, the town of Southbridge, I'd like to present you with this recognition, which notes, "With great honor and recognition for your loyal and dedicated service to the Southbridge Police Department, and to the citizens of Southbridge, retirement, a new chapter in life, congratulations, Officer Avansky."
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're great.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a tough retirement, so. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So now, a hard act to follow, so we will bring up the Airport Commission for a brief presentation, and we'll open up with, I see we have a few members of the committee, commission, rather, here.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right? As you may know, the Southbridge Airport's been operating under a new airport manager for the last four months. Ron has worked tirelessly, I don't know how he does it, truthfully. Day-to-day operations up there is, it's a handful, for sure. We've received a lot of positive feedback from local pilots, aircraft owners, transient pilots, just the general public, about how many changes up there, and how positive the environment is up there now, and that's fantastic to hear. Mass DOT's come in, done a couple inspections, and they're very pleased with the results as well. Some of the accomplishments, the AeroVenture Institute Flight School moved from Worcester to Southbridge, there's active training, pretty much seven days a week, weather permitting. They've had numerous seminars, training events for the local school kids, a couple various groups, a Rusty Pilots Association. I bring that up because it brings people to the airport. A lot of folks don't even know it's up on the hill, and the more folks that show up, the more I see it, and especially the young kids, I mean, that's the future pilots of tomorrow. We've established consistent hangar rental fees and tie-down fees, rents are paid directly to the town, they're being paid in a timely manner, another positive note there. All existing hangar space is occupied, we have an active waiting list now, which is another good thing. Completed a state-funded asphalt crack sealing project that was on the tarmac and the apron and the runway environment, they seal the cracks and extend the life of the asphalt. So that was completed in June. Most of the lighting is operational now, there were some, some of it was due to lightning strikes, various sensors that were, they've gone bad, whether it's from the lightning strikes, or just, there's tilt sensors, and different reasons that the lighting may stop working. Most of that is back-operational, that's another big plus in the Mass DOT's eyes, as well as the FAA's. Were able to purchase a new pickup for winter plowing, and a wider mower now, so we've reduced the cutting time, and that was fantastic, that was an 80-20 grant through the state, 20% was the local, 80 through the state. And we've also completed airport master plan update, that's basically a present view, a five-year view, a 10-year view, and a 20-year outlook view, which direction you want to go, so. That was all completed, pretty much within the last So, that was all completed pretty much within the last four to six months, which is good. Work started prior on some of those projects, but we did, we were able to wrap them up. Some of the challenges and the concerns is for us, Ron has been working at the airport for four months, like I mentioned, but he's really been splitting his time in between the recreational department as well as the airport, and he has far exceeded the number of hours that he's been actively paid for, for being at that airport. He's there seven days a week, seen it, seven days a week, God bless him. So, how to phrase this? We do have a budget that was approved by the council, and the wages are really for a 30-hour airport manager. And now that the town pool is closed, from my understanding, it is kind of the expectation in the Airport Committee that Ron will be resuming full-time activity up there. I know he's been working full-time, but he's been trying to split here and there, and I really think it's important that he's up there, we're gonna have a couple major projects coming up, and really need someone onsite, point person for every, for the public to go to, for Mass DOT as well as the FAA. They reach out to him directly, he brings it to the commission as he should. So, that's one of the things we're working on, just getting Ron up there full-time. We are having an issue with the fuel farm, I did send an email out and a letter out to the town manager, as well as asked to include the council on that. I brought that to your attention for a couple reasons. One, there's a liability issue of the fuel, we're unable to dispense fuel from the fuel farm at this point in time. We've had two inspections done, we have received one estimate, we're gonna get out and get another estimate for that, at least one more estimate for that, but it pretty much is a replacement of the fuel system, not the tanks in the ground, those are, those are fine, they've all passed their inspections, it's going to be from the mechanics on, some of the piping that was used, it's in the quote, but some of the piping that was used years ago is no longer used now, there's issue, known issues with that piping, that needs to be replaced. We're also looking at putting a credit card reader on the fuel pump, at just about every airport you go to now, that's how it's done, it's self-service, you can sell fuel 24/7, which is a good thing. It's also a great thing for pilots that are flying overhead, that if they determine they're a little bit low on fuel, it'd be nice to be able to drop into the clear, the nearest airport to fuel up, versus trying to stretch that, that flight to try to make it to Worcester or some other airport. So, that's, right now, that's our primary concern, and we've reached out to Mass DOT, we'll be meeting with town manager on Thursday night to discuss the fuel farm and maybe some funding options to get that, get that ball rolling. Obviously, the fuel, that represents a substantial amount of money coming into the, into the airport, the more you sell, the more you make, I guess. The diner, weren't able to open up the diner this year, and most of you are probably aware of the issues that we've had, there was an RFP that went out, there was one person that was interested in it, they were really looking forward to 24/7 operation, year round, I shouldn't say 24/7, excuse me, a year-round operation. The diner's not insulated, it's an old 19, I think it's 1950's-era diner, so it's not insulated, it doesn't have the insulated glass, it was gonna be a large expenditure to bring that up, to co-get that all, so he could spend the seven days a week there and run it during the winter, typically it was only a summertime operation. So, in addition to that cost, he would've had his own cost of bringing equipment in in order to run his operation, he wanted to use the basement as well, and that's not suited for it. So, the diner remains pretty much shut down, we're gonna explore some other opportunities with it. We are aware of an issue with the septic system, and we're trying to address that with the, with the Phase 2 of our rebuilding efforts, which is a new terminal building and a new hangar. Which leads me into item three, or four, I guess it would be, and that's the hangar space. We've had, we lost two six-bay T-hangers and one community hang also held six aircraft, so that was a total of 18 spaces we lost because of the tornado. To date, one of the six-bay T-hangers has been rebuilt. A community hangar, as well as a new terminal building, is scheduled for beginning construction, I'm gonna say, the spring of 2015. We're currently having, going through discussions with Mass DOT, the FAA, local engineering firms, or the airports engineering firms, we need to meet some design guy, you know, design criteria set forth by the DOT. We think we're there, the engineering firm will be at the next Airport Commission meeting on the 13th, and it's really kind of the kickoff meeting for us. We've been involved all the way through, but it's really like, this is going to be the date that bids will go out, this, you know, we're really trying to set the calendar. Our expectation is breaking around April, May of next year, which is, which would be fantastic. That will get us back up to 12 of the 18 lost spaces, so after that, we'll have another six to go. So, I don't know if you have any questions to date, or? I know I'm rambling on pretty quickly, I usually do. All right? Nothing? In closing, I'd like to just, I'd like to thank everyone here, everyone that we've worked with, the town council, the various folks we spoke to, the public, everyone has been extremely supportive of the airfield, and that, that's a big plus, you don't feel like you're constantly fighting, and it's fantastic when you have the support of the town. I would like to note that the groundskeeping and a lot of the maintenance is being done by volunteers up there, I know Ron is, I mean, Paul has spent most of his summer up on, sitting on the back of the mall up there, it's a very large area to keep clean up there. In addition to the mauling, you get out and you do taxi, around the taxi lights, and you know, the runway's over, over a half-mile long, so it takes a while to walk up one side, cross, or walk down the other side when you're using a weed whacker. But he's done it, and there's been a lot of volunteerism up there, and I'd like the council to recognize that, I mean, it's really looked, I'm not sure if you've been up there, but it really looks fantastic, and the statements we hear from Mass DOT just makes us smile, put it that way. I would like to also state that there is the Second Annual Cops and Kids Event, gonna be up there, September 13th. Come on up, have a great time, check the field out, see the changes. I believe the Flight School will be giving rides, I don't believe it's a free-fly day, I think there'll be rides available, I'm not sure of the cost, that would be up to them.
Thanks. I was gonna wait till Counselors' Forum, but since you brought up the good things that are happening up there, I just wanna recognize one of your volunteers that just recently did a little bit of mini-renovation, that was Mr. Moran, Mr. Mark Moran. It'd come to my attention that the front landing was not settling so well, and there was a ramp situation, I'd asked him to take a look at that if he had some time, and it was just told to me today that he had done that, I went up and took a look, and he repaired the boards and made sure it matched the new staining that we had done. So, thank you, Mark, for taking the initiative after the request was made, and makes the appearance look much better now that he's shored up that, the walkway to go into the terminal building. So, just wanted to shout out to him as a recognition that we appreciate what he did for the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Pagos?
Just want to mention to the council, in the last couple of months, I've had an opportunity to visit the airport on several occasions, and I have to reflect to the council that the Airport Commission and Ron as their administrative person are really providing some outstanding leadership in terms of moving the airport forward. I know I was told that just a few months ago, as early as back in January, the discussion was all about closing the airport and what to do with it. And now the discussion is about all kinds of exciting things, like a brand-new airport terminal, about a Flight School that is looking at expanding its operations, about the very real possibility of having the restaurant back there so that folks can fly in and have their $500 breakfast, I guess it used to be $100 breakfast.
At country supply.
Yeah.
Really?
I can't afford one, but I'll sit as a passenger if somebody wants to come in. There's all kinds of exciting things happening up there, and if members of the council haven't had the opportunity to see some of that, I would invite you on behalf of the Airport Commission to go up, take a tour around, Ron will show you around, the commission will, and see some of those things that they're doing, I know a lot of you have already seen that, but if y'all haven't had a chance. Under their leadership, they asked about having a big improvement made, which is that hangar, which is all torn apart and gangly and hanging there, and we got a couple thousand-dollar bid, and just today, we were able to reach agreement, so there'll be an execution letter going out, and that hang will be coming down very shortly. So, I'm just incredibly impressed, I've never in my career been involved with an airport before, this is a first for me professionally, and I have to say that I can't believe how many exciting things are going on up there, you should be very, very proud of this Airport Commission you appointed, and Ron as their administrator, really incredible work, guys, really, very impressive.
Thank you.
And someday, maybe, an aeronautics high school to cooperate with our own high school, that's like incredibly exciting and not at all a pie-in-the-sky dream.
And just in closing, I suppose, I just want to thank each of you for the work you've put in, certainly it's been an uphill battle between tornadoes, apathy, resources, or lack thereof, and so many other things. So, the heart and the effort that you've all put in to trying to make this airport thrive and be what it could be is greatly appreciated, and we're hoping that it does that, so. Anybody else, once, twice? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is Citizens' Forum. If there are any citizens here who would like to approach and speak to the council, just give your name and address, please.
My name is Gabe LaFleur, I live at 13 Teresa Ave in Southbridge, better known as Tags. First of all, I want to congratulate all the new councils that got elected to the office of being a counselor, I wish you the best of luck for this coming year. I know it's a tankless job at times, I served five years on the General Government Subcommittee, I know some of the people here that I worked with and everything, and it is a tankless job at times, it's a lot of hours, and you know, I'm a citizen that appreciates what all you people do for us, I wanted to say that. The reason I'm here tonight is for the sidewalks on Marcy Street, especially in front of Belanger and Bullitt Funeral Home, 51 Marcy Street, that's where it is, right in front of there. This, you know, I brought this up two years ago with the town manager, at the time was Chris Clark, but the thing is, he couldn't do anything at that time, particular time, not that he didn't want to do anything, it's because they were gonna put in some new pipelines, if you remember, right, last year, they put in all brand-new pipelines all over the place around that area, and some of the construction equipment damaged some of the sidewalks. After they put in all these pipes and everything, I don't know why they couldn't have done the sidewalks while they were done doing that, you know? I also worked there, and you know, two months ago, the sidewalk's are so bad that a woman was walking with a walker, and she almost tripped, and thank God I was there, I caught her. And you know, it's very dangerous for the elderly, because when they have visiting hours at the funeral home, which I worked sometimes visiting hour, I see these people coming, and some elderly people would came, oh, I'm elderly myself, so I mean, I, you know, but it's dangerous, you know, somebody's gonna get hurt. And why I bring this up tonight too is, I called council, I called Council Vandal about it and everything, and he talked about it, I think, a month ago, and other councilors talked about it, but I don't want it swept under the rugs, like a lot of things are swept under the rugs at Southbridge, you know? This is the elderly I'm talking about, not teenagers or, I mean, elderly people that use that sidewalk a lot. And it's gonna be even worse, because eventually that big parking lot near the school is gonna be shut down, and the people that go to mass on Saturdays and Sundays are gonna be parking down by the nursing home, more down towards Marcy Street, and they're gonna be using that sidewalk. And I'm afraid somebody's gonna really get hurt. And I'm not doing it because I work for Belanger or anything like that, I'm doing it because a concern of the citizens of Southbridge, the elderly, you know? I hope something can be done, I hope somebody goes down there and look at it, you know? Just at least look at it, because if you see it, it's like a roller coaster ride, you know, it's cracks in there, somebody ever, I'm sure some of yous have probably been down by there. And like I said, somebody's gonna get hurt, you know? I'm tired, I went through the channels, and I don't want to say, you've gotta send a letter to the town manager, you gotta do, you know, I'd rather bring it out and see, this is a problem, and it's gonna be solved pretty soon. Once that parking lot is closed, you're gonna have a problem, you're gonna have a big problem. And I don't want the town to be sued, because eventually, you know, society today, they love to sue, so. And it's probably 30 or 40 yards that has to be done, I mean, you could probably do that in three weeks' time, you know, and you'd have a nice sidewalk and do it before that parking lot is closed, that big parking lot, because once they start doing those condos, they have to park somewhere, you know, and they're not gonna park way down the hill, because of all the elders, they can't walk up that hill with a walker or a gait, or whatever. So you know, I just bring it up, and you know, I hope, I don't know what you can do, but I'm sure maybe the town manager can get a hold of somebody and look at it or whatever, usually that's the way it goes, through the channel, but I really wanted to bring it up out of the concern, like I said, for our citizens of Southbridge, especially the elderly. And in closing, I just want to say, you know, I welcome Mrs. Pelican back to the council, it's good to see you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Knowing, as I do, that road repair and sidewalk reconstruction is a priority for this council, you've communicated that to me in your notes of priorities, and I will assure the gentleman that because of the direction of this council, we will, I will go out there with the DPW Director Wednesday morning, we will take a look, I will report back to the council, I'm quite sure that we will undertake those repairs sometime this summer. And if you leave your name and number, sir, or one of the councils would be good enough to let me know that information, I will call you back personally to give you a report of what we find.
Counselor Stevens?
Yeah, I was wondering, through you to the town manager, just a quick question, I heard to me while he was talking, is that, do you know if there's any state grants or federal grants out there, or some other source of funding that can be used specifically to address sidewalks around town? Because obviously, this isn't just, this isn't the only place that we have sidewalk issues, and I know it's like, CDBG funds don't cover most of the town.
Yeah, there's two sources of monies that we receive, both of them. First, you mentioned CDBG, and we do a lot of infrastructure work with those, but we do that in selected targeted areas, and I doubt very much, you said 51 Marcy Street, sir, correct?
Yes.
51 Marcy Street, okay. Knowing that area, I, that's not one of the target areas for the CDBG money, so they wouldn't apply there. The other area we get money in is a show called Chapter 90 Program, which is road and sidewalk repair money, that's the money that we actually tap into to do selective roadwork all around town. It's always programmed well in advance, because we never get enough to do all that needs to be done, but on the other hand, very little of it is done in response to citizen complaints or concerns that are expressed. So typically, when we get one of those, it's not hard to take a chunk of that chapter money, Chapter 90 money, and go do an area that's a chronic issue for the public, and redirect some of the money that was gonna go to another priority. So, typically, that's what we do. There are other monies, P Wed, Public Works Economic Development and things like that, there's lots of pools of money to go get, but those all come with a whole variety of program requirements that may or may not apply. General money just for sidewalk repair does not exist, there are no such programs, they're all linked in with other things of a variety of nature. So Chapter 90 is the best program we've got for this sort of thing.
That's what I figured. Thanks.
Good evening, Roger Cowett, 82 Tullier Avenue. Reason I'm here tonight is to address the town manager regards the transfer of the license of child communications to Comcast. The reason is, I feel the way I'm doing is, we, people in Southbridge, myself and others who prescribe, who take, who have cable TV, are the ones paying for the service, and we were not given the opportunity to express or ask any questions at the transfer of the license. After that evening, I also saw an article in the paper, was the Telegram, that Dudley, Slutman think more of their citizens in Dudley than Southbridge, town manager does, it says in Southbridge, because he will not transfer the license without the in Salisbury, because he will not transfer the license without the people having input on the transfer of the license, if pluses or minuses about Comcast or Charter Communication. Also, we see city council won't do a darn thing unless it goes through the city council. Now, my question is to you, why did you do it without giving us the opportunity to express our views, ask questions at night, which we could not do?
There was a public hearing held, I believe you were present.
Yes, sir, and I could speak.
A videotape of the hearing was made, and I believe a videotape of the, and I believe it's run on several occasions on cable. It will clearly show that there was an opportunity for citizens to be heard. In point of fact, several questions were asked. One gentleman did an excellent job, a citizen, did an excellent job of reiterating provisions of the cable transfer, of the provisions of cable transfer licensing, which is very narrow in terms of what we're allowed to consider. A woman that was there in attendance asked a number of questions. The Comcast representative made a presentation, and it was ample opportunity for anybody to ask any question that they wanted to ask, provided it pertained to the transfer. Now, the law is very narrow with respect to this. People cannot come to a transfer hearing and express complaints or concerns about the current license holder. They're only allowed to express their concerns about the suitability of the transfer applicant, in this case Comcast, and their ability to exercise the license or not. So I think, rather than take my word for it, I would invite you to look at that DVD, that video of the hearing, because I believe you may recall, well, maybe this, my jog, your memory, that there was very ample opportunity given for people to express their concerns. So I'm not quite sure I understand the question, why I didn't allow questions, because I did and I didn't conclude the hearing until all questions had been asked, and I had said several times, are there any other questions? And when no one raised their hands, no one voiced a concern, I closed the public hearing.
Sir, that evening, I was present and I spoke up. We were not allowed to ask questions about charter packages, fees, pluses or minuses what they're going to give us and not take away from us. And that was what concerned with myself, and we were going to give you opportunity. But the other communities seem to think more of their citizens, and I'm going to have citizens to voice your opinion, pluses or minuses about the transfer charter to Comcast. Why wasn't Salisbury have a hearing for the citizens to discuss the issue before the transfer was made? That's my, that's my beef.
Charter was present at the hearing.
Yes, I know it was, but the thing is, we were limited, we could ask questions and could not ask questions, the questions I wanted to ask, because I was, it was like a gag on it, either.
That's because the law doesn't allow us to ask questions about charter and their, the current carrier, their rates, their capabilities, complaints about service. The law does not allow you to ask that, because the point of the hearing is not to consider the ability of charter to do anything, because the point of the hearing is to consider is the new applicant, Comcast in this case, capable of exercising the charter license, the charter cable franchise license. Comcast is, as the law says, stepping into the shoes of charter. They are going to exercise the license. There are no changes to the license, it is simply an exercise of the existing license. Charter's performance with respect to that license is no longer an issue and is not allowed by law to be considered, because they have nothing to do with the hearing. It's all about Comcast and can they perform the license or not. With respect to what other communities may or may not have done, I'm not responsible for that. I don't know what they did. They may well have strayed outside the confines of the law, and if they did, that's on them.
Why couldn't we have a meeting prior to the transfer? That's what I'm referring to. Before they did the transfer, you know what's coming up, why didn't you call a meeting with the council and have the citizens input before you did something? Because, let's face it, the people that subscribe to Charter pay big bucks for the service, and we would now know what you get for your buck. You don't want to go to the store, give them a blank check, and they'll give you what you want, and that's what we're getting, something we don't know we're getting for a dollar. And I think it's misuse of people's money, because we paid for the service, we should have a word, and we need to give the opportunity to have a hearing, discuss what kind of package we could get to improve the package, quality of service and programs. We weren't giving you opportunity to discuss that, and that's my beef. Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, again, you can't discuss that. There is no legal way to discuss charter's provision of services, their packages, their rates and all that. That is not the form to have that discussion. Moreover, since charter is leaving the franchise, that's what the hearing was about, discussing what charter was doing is completely moot, because as soon as the license changes to Comcast, charter's not there anymore. So having discussion about changing rates, changing packages, would really be completely peric, there'd be no point to it, because they're not going to exercise the license. Having said that, I do apologize to you, sir. Had I known that there was interest in doing that sort of a meeting, I would have been more than happy to sit down with folks. It was fairly well-known, I think it was discussed here at this council meeting, it was in the paper, that this hearing was going to happen. So I don't think it was particularly unknown in the community, there were public notices amply displayed. And if I made a mistake in not having some further discussion, then you have my sincere apology. I would have been happy to do it, I just didn't know.
Well, the thing is, I hope it doesn't happen again, because, especially when it comes out in the pockets of the citizens of Salisbury, they should say input before the money you spent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a question to Mr. Pecos through you, Mr. Chip. So the public knows, this transfer, we have our agreement already set, there's no changes. They have to, Comcast has to assume exactly what we've already negotiated with charter.
Yes.
They have to stay within the confines of the contract and the law, and what it would have allowed charter is what it will then allow Comcast.
I know you're asking a question in rhetorical manner to-
I'm asking it to you. Right.
-elicitate the facts more clearly, but yes, you're absolutely accurate. Charter, I'm sorry, in this case Comcast, literally steps into the shoes of charter and exercises the license precisely as it was granted to charter. Questions like packages, fees, people should know that towns do not regulate fees and packages and all sorts, those services. Congress, in its infinite wisdom, deregulated the cable industry. We can't regulate that anymore. The only people who regulate is the public by voting with their feet. If they don't like what they offer, there is direct TV and satellite TV as the alternative. However, we can't regulate pricing of cable, we can't regulate programs, there is, town government has nothing to do with that anymore. If that upsets you, my apologies, write your congressman, because that's who did it.
Just one more thing, if I may. On that note, I noticed a notice we got, and the public should know, that there is a fee increase going on with charter. It's a passed-down fee, it's not something they've increased because they want another dollar fifty. My understanding, the 3.50 fee that was on your bill, we talked about this last year, because nobody knew what that fee was about, is now going to five dollars, if I read your memo correctly. So if you see a five-dollar fee instead of a 3.50 fee on your bill-
And that, again, is not our decision.
Right. That's a pass-through from supposedly what charter is being given by the TV stations and such, is what we're told. Okay. I just want them to know. Thank you.
Any others?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on 375. The hungry man says you want to bring it down. How many businesses are you going to ruin? God, they did. And then we have more abandoned buildings, more devastated, only people that we've been. We'd rather really, really consider, do we want more business or do we want to reunite what we have today? The damage that is, I've been doing more research in the town. I made it my own town and I'm proud of it, and I'm dedicated to it. And I'm going to be coming here until you all get tired of me and they all know him again. Right? And I'm going to get it out of control. These buildings that are abandoned and the warehouses are disappearing, right? You go around Main Street, Broadway, Whitechamp, nobody's home, alone. That run, where there are reasons, how many more bodies were sacrificed in Salisbury? This is up to you and the community and the end community of this town. Hungry man, yes, we want it, but do we want to save the other, the middle way of the small society of Salisbury? The damage is, there's people are part of this building and they were at, whether they never wait for one million dollars of money to mine? Where is our ass and soul? The other thing is, these reasons, we need more security around that method don't want it. This is where our gang are stemming from. If we don't have more security, are we telling our children, hey, go to the white valley, go there and let it all, then go the driveway and have them to die. And my minority, I like to paint the public movement, the deep, it is very honest and very dedicated to a young, and I promote them, and I, and it's very, very sincere, and you are my ear. We've got to not forget about the money and birth and the community, get rid of the drug. We've got to burn our ass and soul and say, we want our children older too and not be bullied, where does the bully and bum bum, that drug damage? But if you don't do what I say, that day you're done, you're out of town. And damn it, bum, where it is all over the United States. Right? The government is about to want to go, dead in my mind. You've had pure race, but you're not pure race, and it's done with the evil coin, and it's done with the manager of it, let's wait up, before we get the drug back in the pool. And when I die again, and if we don't get out these vacant buildings, where there are more drugs, more needles. Right? I want to run, win it all, and I don't die people, and I'm able, my own doctor, and I think other people try, but I want to see everybody working together and the community and add people. It ain't always about knowledge, it's about harmony and sense and safety of others. And once and for all, I'm a divine, every hospital, and troubled by the famine and all their damn. Some of them will be the famine, they are, have been to learn, you people. You all hear me without the weak, but I'm not disappearing. But I am dedicated to this town and I'm trying every day, I'm a guardian of world. And I'm the pride, none of you. Am I getting bored in my head? But it is my time to know. Amen. I'm my people, everybody, I'm going to warm it down and my future adds. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to come forward to speak tonight? Seeing none. Agenda item number nine is vote to confirm the appointment of Jose Altieri of Salisbury as a full-time police officer upon successful completion of medical evaluations and background checks.
Second.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Lieutenant Woodson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I was at the council, Mr. Town Manager. I could just take a couple minutes to speak on Mr. Altieri. He interviewed with us in the last round of hires. He was a manager at FedEx, definitely had a lot of experience. We encouraged him to join our auxiliary. He immediately did so, went through the 242 hours of training, sponsored himself, went for free, volunteers hundreds of hours with our department since he's been an auxiliary, invested, spent thousands of dollars in uniforms, all on his own time. Since joining our auxiliary for the last three years now, he now trains all of our new auxiliaries. He's a field training officer with them. Recently, we converted over to civilian dispatch, Mr. Altieri on his own, put him for a job, trained himself, he's now a per diem dispatcher with us. The man has done everything we've asked him to do. He's an excellent candidate, and he'd be replacing Officer Ifansky, who retired. So it's at no cost, it's in the current budget. I recommend.
Any questions or comments? Just quickly, then, just to confirm for everybody, so Mr. Altieri, if appointed and approved, would be able to, once the medical evaluation, the background check, that stuff is done, really, he's ready to kind of roll right into the job, then?
Yes, he is. Because of his experience with us for the last three years as an auxiliary, we could get an exemption for him. It's a 270-day exemption, which a lot of you already heard me say, it's PPP. So we could train him rather quickly, he had full powers, full police powers, and we could kind of, we could wait a few months until our staffing stabilizes and send him to the next available academy. So it'd be a win-win for the community.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Council Clements?
Yes.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Peliquin?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Vecchia?
Yes.
Council Carrasco?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Congratulations. Agenda item number 10 is vote to confirm the appointment of Santino Marcucci of Salisbury as a full-time police officer upon successful completion of medical evaluations and background checks.
Second.
Any discussion? Actually, we'll start. Lieutenant Woodson.
And again, with regard to Mr. Marcucci, if I may, he has a four-year degree from Fischberg State College in Criminal Justice. He's also been an auxiliary with us for the past two years. He's volunteered hundreds of hours, he's spent thousands of dollars on equipment, he has done absolutely everything we've asked him to do. Within the last few years, the economy's been a little rough, he had difficulty joining a job, finding a job, sorry. He joined the United States Military, the Army National Guard on his own time, completed 14 weeks of training, and we'd also be applying for the same exemptions that we're attempting to get from Mr. Altieri. He'd go right on the street, and we could save him to our staffing increases, and then we can put him to another academy. So I highly recommend.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Peliquin?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Vecchia?
Yes.
Council Carrasco?
Yes.
Council Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Congratulations. Agenda item number 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Dylan Langley of Salisbury as call firefighter effective immediately for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Chief DeFranzler?
Good evening, council. Town manager. Thank you for the opportunity to bring Mr. Langley forward on a recommendation to be promoted to the rank of call firefighter. A little history on Mr. Langley, he joined our department in August, April of last year, excuse me. Thought it was of an interest to him, he asked if he could participate in the district recruit firefighter training program, which is over 330 hours of time, where he learned all of the aspects of being a firefighter. Included into that program was certification process. So upon completion of the program, he came out certified by the Massachusetts Fire Training Council as a firefighter one-two. After completion of all of that, Mr. Langley's also participated and did many hours of observation time riding with the different career groups to understand exactly how our department works, the equipment that we have, which is, some of it is unique to our department. He spent the time to learn all of that. We also got feedback from those group supervisors to understand exactly where he is with our department, and they all felt he was a good candidate to be promoted to the rank of call firefighter. And then one last step that we did, we tested his skill set to make sure that he fully understood and was able to utilize all of the equipment that he may encounter during firefighting operations, and he did a very good job with that as well. So with that, I'd like to recommend Mr. Langley to be promoted to the rank of call firefighter.
Any questions or comments? Council Stevens?
This is a kind of quirky question.
This is a kind of quirky question, Chief. Why is it that we appoint Call Firefighters to three-year terms, but police officers get basically lifetime?
I don't know why it's a three-year term for Call Firefighters versus a full-time career police officer gets a full-time uninterrupted appointment. I don't know that. We'd have to check with the manager's office and understand what happened in the past. But that's historically the way we've done it with the Call Department, so I'm keeping tradition.
I suspect it's a product of tradition because the charter and statutes are quite clear, all employee appointments are made in perpetuity, they're for an indefinite term. So I'll look into that and perhaps we'll change it because I know of no requirement for a three-year term. In point of fact, once the appointment is made, it can't be rescinded except for cause, that's clear in the charter.
Also, Councilor? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellequin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations. Moving on to agenda item number 12, vote to approve the name of the newly constructed playground at West Street School as the Michael A. Vesha Playground.
So moved.
Second. At this point, I thought I saw Mrs. Condon, oh, there she is. Could we have Mrs. Condon come up to just kind of explain the process that we've had
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the playground, the West Street School Playground Committee was a subgroup of the Southbridge Elementary PTA. The playground has neared completion. We have our ribbon-cutting ceremony on Wednesday, September 3rd at 1:30. At West Street School, the playground is open to all residents to go and play, as well as the children will be able to play at West Street School on Wednesday when school starts. And we had recommended, because Mr. Vesha put in so much time at this school and was a great teacher, a respected teacher, that the playground be named after him for all of his years of service to the children of our community. So we recommended the naming of the playground be the Michael A. Vesha Playground.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, I just also want to recognize Mr. Vesha as not only being a schoolteacher, but he was also one of the pioneers of the summer program that took place at West Street for many years, and I want to say thank you.
Okay. Have you, once we do the vote, Mr. Vesha, we'd like to have you speak at that point, but until then, seeing no other comments or questions, roll call please.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellequin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
I think Mr. Vesha wanted to say a couple of words.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Condon and the Elementary School PTA Committee, the Southbridge School Committee, and the members of the Town Council for, you know, bestowing this honor on me this evening. My love for teaching and mentoring Southbridge's youth stems from my belief that you have to live the life that you love, make everything, and that makes everything much easier. I've been afforded the opportunities to serve this Southbridge, my hometown's youth, for many years. Forty-nine years as a teacher, 25 or more years with the Summer Recreation Program, and 43 years as an adjunct professor at Quin Singerman Community College. These different endeavors have allowed me to follow many, many of Southbridge's citizenry from six years old to probably 106, I don't know. So it's been an honor to be with them. Kids have kept me going, 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 and staying young. Within this 90-year-old body still remains a 9-year-old mind, and that's worked for me for all these years. You know, I wanted to be a teacher from when I was a young, young kid. I followed through on it, I served this community, thanks to the many administrators, teachers, fellow teachers, school committees, and town councils that afforded budgets so we could teach successfully. I want to thank everybody that has worked with me, but especially the parents for entrusting their children to my care. Thank you very much for this honor, and live the life you love.
Before we get away too far, Mr. Vesha, we do have something for you as well. Certainly, I just wanted to note that when it comes to somebody, a teacher like Mr. Vesha, you've certainly shown that you can be a successful and a good, effective teacher without being the Ben Stein-type character from Ferris Bueller. That you can have a sense of humor and reach kids that way. And as a public school educator myself, if I could do, make half the impact that you've done, I would consider myself a remarkable success at that point. We have here with us for Michael A. Vesha, with great honor and recognition for your leadership, citizenship, and educational achievements, and we will be dedicating the playground at West Street Field to be known as the Michael A. Vesha Playground, with your moniker of "Live the Life That You Love." Thank you. Agenda item number 13, vote to approve the Southbridge Youth Soccer Organization and its agents to cede and perform minor, one-time upgrades to the lower West Street Soccer Field. This will be of no cost to the town.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Do we have any, I don't think we have anybody here necessarily from the soccer group. So we will, any questions or comments? Councilor Clements?
You have to ask. So I wasn't at that meeting, and I think it's wonderful that someone is taking the reins in doing this, it certainly needs it. But did they consult with, do we know who, is it a professional that's leading them?
Kevin Condon of KNC Long Care.
So he's definitely overseeing the project?
Yes.
Then I have no problem. I just wanted to make sure that we...
And he was at the meeting to speak about it as well.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So any other questions, comments? Just, Councilor Pellequin?
This came through my subcommittee, and I was more than happy to have it added to the agenda for our meeting, but I would like to say moving forward, I'm interested in having a discussion about whether this field should be managed by the town or by the school, given that it's next to the school, and we ran into problems getting the playground built in a timely fashion because there is all of this go-between, between the town side and the school side. So I would like to discuss potentially moving forward down the line to move the management of this field over to the schools. I know that's not strictly pertaining to this specific agenda item, but I'd just like to throw that out there.
We can have a discussion with the school side to expedite that process and have that discussion.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns with this proposal? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor Pellequin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item number 14 is vote to transfer $21,500 from account 1.190.5700.0.746, reserved for property repair, maintenance, and demolition, to the following accounts to cover insurance premiums for fiscal year 2015. 1.940.5740.0.721, insurance premiums, property, liability, and sports, in the amount of $16,500, and account number 1.940.5740.300.721, insurance premiums, property, liability, sports, school department, in the amount of $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, to the Town Manager, can you give an explanation of what this is?
Sure.
Why do we need to do this? The, in 2013, the Massana Local Insurance Association, which is a consortium of cities and towns that bulk purchases insurance for workman's comp and property casualty purposes, did an audit of town building values, and apparently the values that they determined versus what we were insuring those buildings for was at variance by some $30 million. They advised then-Town Manager Chris Clark that the town needed to increase the values, and along with that came additional premium in the vicinity of $18,000. Chris successfully negotiated with Meyer and allowed that to be blended over two years. That was a very favorable arrangement that Chris was able to conclude. Unfortunately, when the budget was prepared this year, more than likely because you had an interim who was not aware of those circumstances, and Chris had begun his new employment, the $9,000 increase, which was attributable to fiscal 14, did not appear in the budget, and the $9,000 increase, that was the second year for fiscal 15, the current year fiscal year we're in, was also not included in the budget. So the total shortfall is this $18,000 that this has now been requested. There was also a discount that Meyer offered for early payment of the entire premium rather than on a quarterly basis. They offer a quarterly payment plan, a semi-annual, and an immediate upfront, and in return, they gave a 5% discount. They reduced that this year to 4%, which accounted for another $5,000 in the shortfall. Totalling the figure, you see before you.
Then how does this, if we're taking this money out of the fund that demolishes buildings, how does this affect that other priority that you had about going after some of the derelict buildings?
That means that instead of being able to demolish $50,000 worth of buildings or rehab, renovate, whatever, we will be able to do about half that much work. And in terms of the amount of work that entails, that's roughly one building, every 25,000 is one building. They do vary, some are much more, some are a bit less, but I would say average is around 25. So instead of doing two this year, we'll only be able to do one with this money. But we're working on other sources, and that will be the subject of a memo to the council probably within the next week or two.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellequin?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item number 15, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Warner Larson in the amount of $28,000 for the redesign of McCann Field.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. On the back of the first page, paragraph seven, it reads $28,000. It should read $28,000 in the wording. It has the correct numerical numbers, numerical presentation, but for the wording for $28,000, it says 28 and no, no sense. It should be $28,000.
So in provision number seven in the second line?
Yep.
It reads not to exceed $28 and no, and basically $28, whereas the numeric amount is the $28,000.
Correct. So that should be corrected.
Councilor Vecchia?
Thank you. Those $28,000, I understand we have a grant for this, is that true?
That's correct.
So it's no cost to the town?
Correct. That's correct.
That's very important. So move forward. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? As a note, as one of the members of the subcommittee that is working on this project, this $28,000 is for the engineering and the planning purposes of the redesign, not for the actual construction work, because that would be quite a bargain if we could do that for $28,000. And as that process goes forward, there will be public hearings and public input sessions so people can come down and let that committee know what they envisioned for McCann Field down on Henry Street. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Vecchia?
My next question is, is that going to be covered by a grant also? The construction?
So.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellequin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item number 16, vote to ratify the amendment of Rule 4 and Rule 4A of the Southbridge Town Council Rules and Regulations to be consistent with the Town's Charter, Chapter 2, Town Council, Section 4, General Powers and Duties, Part 20402.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager?
Councilor Manna had asked some weeks ago, I think before a subcommittee meeting, about what appeared to be conflicting provisions between the charter and the council's regulations with respect to how citizen members of subcommittees were appointed. Did some research and found out that indeed there was a conflict. In point of fact, there were two different council regulations which provided for two different appointing procedures, and those two regulations were at odds with the town charter, which itself provided for yet another appointment procedure. In Massachusetts, a home rule charter, which yours is, is considered ascendant over any conflicting provision of bylaw, regulation, and even Massachusetts general law, unless the Massachusetts general law specifically prohibits local legislating in that area. So in this case, the only provision of law that stands would be the one in the charter, and therefore these two provisions can be and should be repealed since they are inconsistent with the charter. That will leave you with the process in the charter for how subcommittee members are appointed, which ironically is how you've been doing it.
Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I'd like to make a note that for the charter, it says Part 20402, that's not in our charter, it's 2-4-4, I believe that is speaking of when it refers to how the subcommittees are formed. Second, I don't want to see these rules repealed, because if we're going to repeal Rule Number 4, then we have to take the entire thing out, and there's a lot of meat to that. And if we repeal 4A, then we're taking out some important information. What I would like to see are these two amended, and for Rule 4, I would like to see take out, in the first paragraph, down at the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, starting at the 11th sentence, "The subcommittee chairperson shall be allowed to nominate non-council members to their subcommittee, subject to confirmation of the town council." I would like to see that amended by saying, "Non-council members shall be nominated to subcommittees according to Section 2-4-4 of the Home Rule Charter." And Rule Number 4A, I believe it's very important that we keep in, citizens may be appointed to serve on the town council subcommittees by the chairman of the town council, subject to confirmation of..." Take that out. And keep in, "Appointments of citizen members of the town council subcommittee shall be for terms end in July 31st or until new members are appointed." I feel that piece is very important to keep in our rules. I feel that piece is very important to keep in our rules, uh, because it's not in our charter. I, I, if we're going to re, if we're going to repeal Rule Number Four and Rule Number 4A, then we're taking out a lot of things and there's going to be a lot of confusion and it's going to be left open to a lot of controversial everything. Just from prior experience, not even being on the council, from when I was a citizen, trying to get on subcommittees, the, it was, it was horrible and then, but it does need to be amended. Both, both Four and 4A need to be amended to reflect what the charter states and that's all, thank you.
I have Counselor Vecchia.
I think we should make a motion to return this to subcommittee and then put it back on the agenda in whatever way we want to do it. I think we should go to subcommittee, general government. I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
So we would have to draw that first motion?
Well, you can still vote on this one and then just do the election.
I'd just like to table this to, to the back of the subcommittee.
So, but you, your motion is to, is to refer it back to subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on Counselor Vecchia's motion to refer back to subcommittee?
Well, I was more commenting because I seconded because it never went to subcommittee in the first place.
We can't hear you.
I have no, I have no real problem with what, what, what Counselor Manager said, but, you know, cause I can, I, you know, I, I agree with some of her points too, but this is something when you're lawmaking that was, that's the whole point of general government. And this was never discussed, the general government.
So if you vote yes to send a subcommittee on this motion, it goes, then the original motion is vote to amend, you just say no, and then it can come back up amended and then you can vote yes or no.
Yeah, I know.
So we don't have to discard the first section, we just got to finish with the new motion, because that's the pending motion now.
Any other questions or comments or concerns on Counselor Vecchia's motion? Seeing none, so the, the roll call will be on Counselor Vecchia's motion to refer this matter back to general government subcommittee.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselors?
I don't think the word back should be.
Apologies.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Okay, so motion carries to send it to subcommittee. Uh, we still do have a motion on the floor to vote to ratify the amendment of Rule Four and 4A of the Southbridge Town Council Rules and Rights to be consistent with the Town's Charter, Chapter Two, Town Council, Section Four, General Powers and Duties, Part 2-4-4. Do we have any other comments, questions, concerns or withdrawals?
To make it simple and not go through this process, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah. So the original motion has been withdrawn. Moving on to agenda item number 17, vote to approve the zoning bylaw amendment for the keeping of livestock on less than five acres as recommended by the planning board. This is the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining from this discussion on the recommendation of town council.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Um, just like I said at the, at the Planning and Development Subcommittee, I'm abstaining from this discussion and vote on the recommendation of town council.
Okay. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Seeing, seeing none? Uh, roll call please.
Counselor Clements?
You have to read it.
Oh, it's right here.
It's the first reading, isn't it?
Yep, it is. It's the first reading even though we've done it a few times, but it is the first reading.
Sorry.
No, it's a good catch. A new definition of Section 300.451, livestock on less than five acres. The keeping of animals on less than five acres, whether for gainful purposes or not, includes chickens, turkeys, ducks, cows, goats, sheep, alpacas, llamas, donkeys, burrows and mules, wild rabbits and emu, and excludes roosters, pigs, geese, bulls and oxen. This definition does not include pets such as interior caged birds, cats, dogs, pot-bellied pigs, domesticated rabbits, gerbils, hamsters, caged mice and guinea pigs. Livestock on less than five acres, the standards. Section A, the resident, or regulation A, the resident must have a permit from the Board of Health. B, the animals must be kept at least 25 feet from adjacent lots. C, the animals must have appropriate housing and protection for every season. D, no roosters, geese, pigs, bulls or oxen are permitted. E, animals must be kept within a fenced area on non-street facing sides of the subject lot. F, a noise plan must be provided. G, a waste plan must be provided. H, a feed storage plan must be provided. I, the number of animals allowed will be determined through the special permit process. Two, a new section, 502.68, in the Table of Use Regulations, and that proposed, uh, table includes livestock on, livestock on less than five acres, the keeping of animals on less than five acres, whether for gainful purposes or not, must comply with standards, see definition with standards. And in that, single-family homes, uh, would have to get a special permit, two families and multifamilies, uh, would, would not be allowed, uh, the retail businesses would not be allowed, uh, general business would be able to have, uh, special permits, light industrial and high industrial would have, uh, special permits, uh, I don't recall the beauty.
Business opportunity.
Business opportunity district with a special permit and, uh, the conservation.
Central.
Central Core. Counselor Clements has been on the, uh, the, uh, Planning and Development Subcommittee has dealt with this extensively, so Central Core would also not be allowed to apply for this permit. On January 25th, oh, actually, so that, that isn't part of the actual bylaw, so. So that is, uh, as it is currently written and proposed, and again, that, that is for the first reading, first reading of this latest go-around. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Roll call please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Abstained. Abstained.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Eight yes, one abstain.
Motion carries, so there will be, at the next meeting, we will have the second reading. Moving on to agenda item number 18, Counselors Forum, I will start tonight with Counselor Vandal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm gonna make sure that, that, what Mr. La-Flesh asks for, the sidewalks, uh, near Bullitt Funeral Home, uh, to get, we'll put it through my DPW Subcommittee, so that, you know, we, we'll get on it. That, and, uh, I asked quite a few months back about the building behind Domino's Pizza on the corner of, uh, West Street and, uh, Main Street. There's a building behind Domino's Pizza that's really dilapidated and it's, it's, it's really an eyesore. So I was wondering if somebody could follow up on that and, uh, you know, straighten it out. And, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchia?
Thank you. Um, through the chairman to the town manager, on your weekly report, uh, August 6th, August 12th, um, you're talking about ambulance billing and that the result change would be an increase in revenue for the town in excess of $100,000 per year on ambulance service. I asked a couple of questions and I was told that this money would come because we would raise the fee from $800 to $1,000, is that correct?
No, the.
That's what the fire chief told me.
Well, that would be what the increase would be as it's applied to a particular run. Um, what we do is we base our ambulance fees on what's called Medicare Plus. So the Medicare fee, i.e. the fee for particular ambulance service, and there's many, many different components, for instance, a, a bag of IV creates a fee, the tubing for the IV creates a fee, et cetera. So what Medicare will pay is the standard and then what cities and towns do is adopt what's called Medicare Plus. Now, it can be Medicare plus 300%, which is what the city of Cambridge is, or somewhere in between. And, uh, the standard we've adopted is well below Medicare plus 300, but it's higher than what we were formerly at. The only people that will pay this fee increase will be insurance companies for people who carry insurance, not Medicare and not uninsured persons, but insured persons. We're nowhere near, uh, the top of what most towns, uh, bill at, but we're more competitive now than we were. We were billing, um, well below what most communities bill and that's just simply lost revenue to the taxpayers.
Well, can you explain to me why the fire chief said on an average, the cost would be from, it would go from $800 to $1,000?
Well, because he was using a, he was using an average ambulance charge typically, um, often, oh, well, here he is. So I'll let him explain this, I'm not sure, but I suspect it's an average charge, chief.
That's exactly correct. When, uh, Mr. Vecia, when we spoke, I gave you average numbers, rough numbers, they said if you wanted exact numbers, I would get those for you.
I don't either.
So I didn't want to be held to those numbers, but I was giving you examples so that you could have an understanding of why Mr. Pecos and, and we decided to make that upgrade and decision. So those numbers are not accurate, they've never been accurate, if you want true accurate numbers, we will provide those to you.
Well, how much on the average is it going to cost?
I, I can't answer that because like Mr. Pecos described, each ambulance call is different.
What we did is we took, um, as the memo says, uh, as the report says, we took the prior fiscal year's billings, we extracted from those, the Medicare payments, we extracted from those, the non-insurance payments, leaving us solely with payments that are made by insurance companies. We multiplied that number times the new fee and that equaled approximately $100,000. So the assumption is if we get approximately the same number of runs in fiscal 14, 15, as we had in, uh, the prior fiscal year, we will collect $100,000 more in revenue.
Well, you say the same amount of runs, how many runs are you talking? Are you talking, um, $200 per run extra?
You can't break it into a specific fee because at the current time, we're not doing what's called bundled fees, we're doing individual billing. So if you have, um, call, uh, an ambulance and you need, um, oxygen and you need an intravenous line and you need a bag of fluid, um, then you get charged according to a schedule a certain fee. There are literally thousands of things on those fee schedules, so it really isn't possible to give you an answer because it depends on the particulars of what the patient uses on that given ambulance run.
But even so, the $100,000 is going to come from the people who are insured, who's taking the ambulance?
That's correct.
They're going to cost them extra money.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's my point. All right, moving on, thank you very much. Moving on, um, on this week's report, you mentioned that, uh, a police officer is going to Charlton and the, one of the primary issues is the $2 an hour wage scale difference. Can you explain that to, to me, please?
Sure. Each community, um, has a wage scale for every employee, um, and in this case Charlton's wage scale for their police officers is $2 higher than our maximum step. So let's say we have three steps and I don't happen to know what our wage scale is, I'd have to go get it in the book.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Let's say we have step one on hire, step two, six months later, step three, three, uh, six months later. You get to a maximum step, which is the maximum pay a patrolman can get when he reaches, he or she reaches the top. Charlton's schedule comparable is $2 per hour higher than ours.
The top, the tops?
The top step, correct.
So Charlton is paying $2 an hour more than us, but, uh, does that include the police chiefs, does that include the lieutenants, is their police chief making more than our police chief?
We don't know what, the non-union employees, this is, um, the exit interview that you're referencing here for an officer that left was strictly for a union employee.
I understand, but all I'm trying to explain, we do have a lot of police officers making more money and I would assume than in Charlton if you were to compare it.
These would be patrolmen only, so it doesn't include superior officers, sergeants, lieutenants and chiefs, because we have no data on that.
Okay, but it didn't say patrolmen in, on this write-up, I said, I don't see, it says patrolmen. He was just talking about one case. Okay, thank you very much. I'm all set.
Counselor Steves?
I don't have anything to say, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Peliquin?
Uh, two things. First of all, I'd just like to, uh, remind everybody that we have an election coming up on September 9th, so mark your calendar. I know we have another town council meeting between then and now, but it's only the day before the election, so remember to vote on September 9th. And the other thing is, is the pool had its last day on Sunday, so I'd like to thank everybody who worked at the pool this summer for having a great season. Thank you, Mr. Plouffe. Uh, and my family really enjoyed it, so we really appreciate everybody's hard work. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I got a few things. Um, first I want to, I, I want to, um, thank Officer Ivansky, Cindy, Officer Cindy, that's how I know her, um, for, for her hard work in the community, 31, I didn't realize it was 31 years. So she's, she's done a lot for this community. I do remember a couple of years ago being at the Relay for Life and she was, um, she was on duty there and, um, my then 22-year-old son was with me and he's like, "Oh, is that Officer Cindy? She taught me there." So, you know, he remembered her from that many years ago and she must have made an impact in his life, so I wish her well. Um, also, Mr. Chair, this question's to you, any thoughts on the implementation steering committee, when that will be on an agenda for discussion, will that go through a subcommittee for discussion, um, for the, um, the master plan? It's, I don't want to see this fall back, we have people that really want to get out there and start doing things and I think it's very important that we keep this alive.
Right, so it, when it does go through subcommittee, it will go through yours and, and you're certainly free to schedule that.
Okay.
To my knowledge anyways, nobody has put in yet, um, but it was, it was put out as kind of an announcement that anybody who's interested, by all means do so, uh, but to my knowledge anyways, nobody has, has put in as yet. I know there were several, uh, several folks who had expressed interest at some point prior, but in terms of actually stepping up to do the paperwork, uh, to my knowledge it hasn't happened. But as soon as you want to set that as a, as an agenda item through, uh, Planning and Development, we can do so and, uh, and hopefully create a, a greater impetus for people to step up and, and join the master plan, uh, implementation committee.
Okay, I didn't realize it would go through my, I thought it was going to go through you and you would discuss it with the council, so thank you, um, for letting me know that. Also, um, through you to the chair, I remember last year, um, we had a discussion, I mean, through you to the town manager, we had a discussion, um, with the goals and the objectives for, um, Town Manager Clark. And, and we talked about the, um, the insurance and I'm not sure if it was at that meeting or if it was at another meeting, but I remember Mindy Ernst was supposed to be looking at other options for, um, health insurance. So, I mean, I, I believe there's a deadline, I think it's in October, so if you could follow up with her on that to see where she is on that and follow up with us, that would be marvelous, because I believe the insurance is a huge thing here and I believe that's why some of the younger people may be leaving, so.
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. And also I just, I, I want to, um, touch upon a little bit what Mr. Cowett said in regards to, um, the charter and the Comcast. I can feel some of his frustrations, he, he's discussed this with me. He's talking about the other towns, um, not supporting this, he, he mentions Dudley and he mentions Worcester, he did give me some articles on this and basically the main thing that's, um, a concern of the council, counselors or the selectmen out in Dudley and out in Worcester is the bad customer service that Comcast has and that's their main concern and they want, they do want to hear from, um, the residents and whatnot. And I, I was under the assumption too that the public hearing was when we, we should come and voice our opinions. Also, and he, he did give me a little quote from the paper that one of the, um, councillors out in Worcester said, "This is not going to be in the best... said, "This is not going to be in the best interest of the consumers." And I'm assuming that's, that remark could be in response to the bad customer service that Comcast is known for. So, and also, I wanted to know, is, has the license been signed to, do the transfer?
The license transfer has been approved, yes.
It has been approved.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and that's, oh, and I wanted to also, what Counselor Peliquin mentioned, September ninth, it's our state primary. Every election is important. You should be out there if you're a registered voter, and you should be voting. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Estrada?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, President. The last week, the last weekend, twenty-five or twenty-three parents brought me a very big concert. No transportation for the football team. A big problem for security, the child. Any help for the league? I may talk for Mr. Pecia in the morning, or email for the other concert. And then the next meeting, for respond for, for the coach, for any help. Eight, eight game in Manchester, Spencetown, Webster, Springfield, Ohio. Eight, a ten child for one car. I need forty thousand dollars for rent, the bus, gas, or something, why? Very hard, forty dollars, forty thousand dollars. Any help?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things. It was mentioned earlier when the airport was speaking about the Cops and Kids Second Annual Run, well, the Second Annual Runway Car Show proceeds to benefit the Cops and Kids program as well as the Southbridge Police Association. That is happening September thirteenth. I believe the gates open at noon. You can register a car if you have one. You can pre-register and save a little bit of money on the registration. I believe the forms are available at the police station or online at the Cops and Kids website. It's copsandkids.com. Great Family Day, burnouts, food vendors, product vendors. They've got a dunk booth, which I hear raises lots of money for the people that they're dunking, for the, for the benefit of the people that are getting dunked, yes. I guess you did it last year, did you not?
I did.
Yeah. Should be very interesting, dunk a counselor and all that. So we are hoping that the community will come out to the airport on September thirteenth and spend the day, or a portion of the day, and, and help to support these wonderful programs in our community that the kids benefit from. It's very important. I would also like to talk, speaking of the airport, I would like to thank Arrow Ventures and the Allen family. You probably aren't even aware of this, but last, a couple of Fridays ago, the eighth, August eighth, they brought their camp to the Cops and Kids program at the community center because they were having a presentation with the David Clark Company out of Worcester. They do this every year at their Arrow Venture camp. And what they did was ask me, they were questioning about having a larger audience for this presentation because it's so exciting about space and spacesuits and all that good stuff. And it was recommended that they, you know, head on over and talk to Sergeant Dinghy and perhaps collaborate. And sure enough, they made it a point to have this presentation done at the community center when all the Cops and Kids participants were there. So there was a whole group of children, and it was wonderful. The two gentlemen that came from the David Clark Company did a fantastic job. They were about, they were there for about two hours. They brought two spacesuits, including the one spacesuit from that gentleman who, I guess they call it the Red Bull suit. I got that one. The Red Bull, Red Bull spacesuit, that was the guy who, you know, jumped out of a, or got rocketed up and came down to space with just a spacesuit and a parachute. So the kids were enthralled by all of that. They also brought space food, wonderful tubes of Chicken Divine and stuff, and applesauce, and, and all the kids got to try the foods. It was really, they were just mesmerized at times. I'd never seen all these kids, eighty kids or so, so quiet. And this is a really great example of a private-public partnership. So I really want to thank Arrow Ventures, and as I said, the Allen family, for having thought about the community in a way that they could give a little bit of something that they do to, back to the community at no charge. This was no cost to anybody, and it was a wonderful learning opportunity to show our children what they might do in the future. Perhaps some, maybe they'll take a small part and become part of the aerospace industry or the, the aeronautics industry in some way. They could see the potential. And so it was really a great, a great event, and I, we thank them. And again, this just shows you what we can do here in the community and what the airport in and of itself is capable of promoting. Definitely a win-win for all of us, so we thank them. I thought I had another note, but let's see, last burnouts. Nope. Oh, speaking of the Casella Open House, I have to say, I went last year. I believe Counselor Manna might have went last year, and a few others. Tell you, it was a great event. If you, if you want to know anything, you have your doubts, everybody does about the landfill, go on up there on the open house day, take a little bit of time, get the tour, get the information, whether you like it or not, the information they give you, it's very, very good information, and it certainly opens your eyes, and of course, enjoy the free food and the camaraderie that goes on up there. Really, really interesting information and, and education for anybody in this community, especially if you have concerns. Bring your questions with you, they'll be happy to answer them for you. That was important. One other thing, cheerleading. Cheerleading is a sport. I had a child who was in, as a cheerleader. Cheerleaders can run circles around many other sports players. If any of you've ever seen a competition and the way they have to work out prior, cheerleading is a sport, and it should never be not, not acknowledged as such because they work just as hard as anybody else. So I had to say that because it bothered me a bit. Congratulations, Officer Cindy. We're going to miss you. Thanks.
Thank you. And just quickly, as a clarification, in terms of the cheerleading bit, the comment was slightly misconstrued, especially as somebody who, when I worked for the newspaper, did a story kind of on that very issue. And then, secondly, just luckily enough for myself anyways, I've not been hit up for the dunk tank, but I believe the town manager has, so enjoy that.
I think the question for the public is, what is cooler, to dunk the town manager or to dunk a counselor? I don't know.
Moving on, Counselor Carrasco.
Could be a little competition going on here.
With?
Highest bidder?
To benefit for the Cops and Kids.
With that being said, I, I was not in town last year for the car show, but I will participate in the dunk tank this year. So I challenged Denise Clements, Apple Vecchia.
I'm going to be working.
Don't worry, you can be there. Apple Vecchia, to us.
Better be the ice bucket challenge.
Again, you know, it's for our own program and for our own kids.
Counselor, I did it last year.
She did it last year, so I think Counselor Estrada, yeah, you'd be a good fit. And of course, Counselor Moriarty after that cheerleading comment, but, but I just, I do have one, one...
I'm not going to eat for a week just saving up my dollars for softballs in the dunk tank. Right there.
They take checks. You can write a check out.
I'll, I'll...
Don't starve, don't starve. But on that note, I do have one comment and basic, as school starts this week for many children, I, I want to encourage the parents, because again, the responsibility of education is not only on the child, but also on the parent. And I want to encourage the parents to get involved in whatever school district you're in. It doesn't matter if you're in Southbridge, Quabog, Shepherd Hill, wherever, get involved in your children's education. It is very important that you are present, go to the events, meet the teachers, know what's going on with your child, because again, it is their future, but it's also our future. So I want to wish all the students the best, but at the same time, I want to challenge the parents to get involved, because you can sit there and talk about whatever school district you want, but if you don't get involved in your child's education, it's pointless. It's pointless to talk if you're not involved with your child. So please get involved. Again, whatever school district you're in, please get involved. Also, I want to thank the state pool staff, those, Mr. Plouffe, all those, Mr. Town Manager, all those that took on themselves to make sure that our pool kept running even in the midst adversity. So again, I just want to say thank you. I believe it was a great season. I did make it down there once, and there was a lot of happy kids down there. On that note, I got nothing else to say. I expect you all at the dunk tank.
Agenda item number nineteen, discussion of next meeting date, Counselor Carrasco.
That will be Monday, September eighth, at seven o'clock in council chambers.
Okay. And agenda item number twenty, adjournment?
Adjourned.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very, very much.